The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox Cities Campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevanik. Alderman Langdon. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Tom Garde. Alderman Ted Garde. Alderman Repella. All are present with the absence of Alderman Nichols.
So the first item on the agenda this evening is a report of department head, staff, and consultants. And we do have Nick from Gold Cross Ambulance here this evening to share with us a little bit about their ambulance service within the City of Manassia.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you guys having me out today. I'd prefer to be at the podium, but I guess my clicker's got range here, so I'll be over here to make sure that I can progress to the slides. But I think it's been about two years, two and a half years since I've been here, so I do appreciate you guys getting me back in and being able to kind of share what's changed, what stayed the same, and give you a little bit of an overview about the service we provide the City of Manassia. So our focus has always been on patient care. So we've been in the Fox Cities and the City of Manassia since the early '90s, and we've really grown and progressed and modified how we do business over the last five years to really be focused on the region that we provide care to. We still continue to have joint ownership from both Theta Care and Ascension, 50% ownership on both. We have eight board members that will meet on a quarterly basis. They have oversight of really our finance and our quality. They're two big buckets. They look at our organization as how we're doing as an organization, what's the quality of care that we're providing. So they'll look at response times, and then obviously the patient care that we provide on an annual and monthly and quarterly basis as well. Again, with the regional system, we have 14 ambulances on every single day, and that covers about 1,200 square miles. But the important thing to understand about our system that's maybe a little bit different than the fire departments or services that you're familiar with is we'll move ambulances all around our region. So you'll see as we get busier, ambulance calls come in, we're moving those 14 ambulances around our service area to be more efficient with what we have and be really strategic where we have ambulances placed. So you know, if we have a call in Manassia and the Manassia ambulance goes out, we're constantly backfilling and getting another ambulance into the city to handle the call volume that you guys have. So about four years ago, we transitioned to the majority of our ambulances going to 12-hour shifts. And we used to be on a 24-hour shift model where the paramedics were at the station 24 hours a day. And obviously, we had to factor in some downtime. We couldn't be as strategic and efficient with those resources because we were constantly trying to get them back to their home station. When we transitioned to 12s, we got a lot more operational flexibility out of our ambulances because they didn't need to get that rest time. They were only on for 12-hour shifts. They got to go home and sleep in their own beds, and really allowed us to move those ambulances a lot more deliberately and effectively around our 1,200 square miles. So that allowed us to get more really bang out of the buck for the resources that we had on during the day, and it also allowed us to track and trend areas within our response zone that we needed to be a little bit more strategic. So on a quarterly basis, I'll meet with our dispatch center, who will review response times, and then we'll modify those posting guidelines based on gaps we have in our coverage area. So we do a lot with our ambulances that is a little bit more unique, and you know, it really allows us to cover the City of Manassia as well as the surrounding municipalities the best we can with the current resources we have on at any given time. Just a couple of things I wanted to go through. This is similar stuff we go through with the mayor on an annual basis, but these are kind of just common questions we get. You know, how often the ambulances actually get canceled? So we arrive on scene and the patient elects not to go to the hospital, or they just need help or evaluation at the home. So we do that quite a bit throughout the year in the City of Manassia. Most common time we do that, so it's about 374 times a year. So 374 out of the roughly, we do about 1,500 calls in the City of Manassia on an annual basis. So about 370 times, the patients are electing not to go to the hospital. Most of the time, it's an evaluation. They just wanted to get checked out. They don't feel like they want to go to the hospital. And the other major factor is what we call an invalid assist or a help up. So somebody has fallen, they don't have the family or friends around to help them get off the ground. We help them into their chair, get them what they need, and then we have them sign off. So those are the most common, two most common that we'll see when it comes to no transports. The next is kind of what are we coming to in the City of Manassia? So what is the most common thing we're seeing, we're encountering when somebody picks up the phone and calls 911 in the City of Manassia? Number one, and this is very similar across the board when you look for municipality, municipality, sick persons and falls are the two biggest ones that we're going to see and continue to see year to year. Only about 3% is a cardiac arrest. So something that we would consider a true emergency, one that we need all hands on deck. We work really closely with NINA, Manassia Fire Department, and their first responder groups to help us on those types of calls. They're very well-trained and a very well-educated department that really makes our job a lot easier when we respond to those critical calls. So it's a small volume that we responded to the really critical calls, but again, really important to have our education and training partnerships we have with the city here. Patient destination, this should really be no surprise to anybody that lives in the city. We basically, about 65% of the time, we're either going to Theta Care in NINA or we're going to Sanes because you guys are really right in the middle of those two hospitals. And we see that from municipality to municipality. People are going to what they're close to. So if they know that Alp, the medical center is their closest hospital, they're typically going there. Insurance is a factor there, what coverage they have, but really, it's only a small amount of individuals that have private insurance, only about 17%, 16.5% in the City of Manassia that have private insurance. So there is some flexibility with what hospital destination they can go to. And then obviously AMC and then other hospitals is a factor there as well. Paramedics, so majority Medicare, about 55%, 54.9% of your paramedics within the city. So the ones that actually call 911 are Medicare patients. And then Medicaid makes up 24.5, and then private insurance about 16.6%. So this, we look at this frequently, determine, you know, the demographic that we're encountering here, that is an older population that we're seeing more and more in our business. And then this allows us to help budgeting and allocation of resources as well on an annual basis for our region. Response times, so this is the month-to-month breakdown. So we have an average response time on the annual year of six minutes and six seconds. And then our goal is 89.34% or our goal is 90%. We were just shy of that this year. Couple factors that really attributed our response time issues in 2021, which we saw that really across the board. We were either just above or right below our response time goal of 90% was the interfacility transport call volume we were seeing with the hospitals. Their demand and the need to move patients from one hospital to another was up about 40% in the last quarter of 2020, 2021, and 20% for the previous three quarters. So that transfer call volume fell on us, and we had to get creative with deployment of resources, but we did a really good job of making sure that we were taking care of both aspects of our system. So moving the patients and residents around the service area that we have to get them the care that they needed because, you know, hospital admissions were at an all-time high and bed availability was really at a premium the last year. So we had to get really creative with that part of our business and to ensure we were still able to provide really quality 911 care in the City of Manassia, which we were still able to do. Just a few things that I wanted to highlight. The equipment that we have in all of our ambulances is really top of the line, something that we're really proud of. We've invested really heavily into our organization through capital expenses and everything that we bring in the door, we invest back in the organizations. We continue to provide quality care. So whether that's ambulances, medical equipment to provide the best care possible, we have power cotton power load systems, which helps not only Gold Cross and our workman's compensation mod when we're looking at lifting and twisting and putting heavier patients in the ambulances, it helps the fire department as well because they're often helping us lift and load and get those patients into the ambulance as well. So that was a big expense that we saw really pay out well for us in our experience mod for workman's compensation. Video laryngoscopes, when we're on that 30 calls, those cardiac arrests, we're able to visualize the airway, get that advanced airway in place, and continue our life-saving measures a lot more efficiently. So a lot of pulses in all of our ambulances, and then we have pediatric specialty care bags. So one of the things I wanted to focus a little bit with the council on tonight that I haven't done in previous presentations for you guys is really the quality. So response times are great. How fast we can get to the call is fantastic, but if we don't have the right people getting the call and provide the right quality care to the residents, we're not doing our job. We can get there as fast as we can, but if we're not knowing what we're doing and we're not really working well and collaboratively with our first responder groups, we're really not providing that whole 360-degree patient care that we'd like to provide. So the first slide here is what we call acute coronary syndrome or STEMI patients. So STEMI patients are your true heart attack. So ones that we actually will physically diagnose in the field. So our paramedics will apply the cardiac monitor, they'll identify abnormalities within that EKG, and then we'll activate the hospital system to get their cardiologists in place, their nurses, their techs into the hospital so that when we hit that door, they can go right up for intervention as quickly as possible. So we look at the number of activations, which was pretty consistent year to year. We're up a little bit this year already. We're up about 36% this year already from 2022. So we'll see if that continues to sustain, but very consistent numbers there. And then our door-to-balloon time, so that's from the time we hit the door, so the time they actually have intervention in place and fix the problem within the heart. The national standard is 90 minutes, and in 2021, we're at 69.3. So well below that national standard, providing that good care, identifying what we need to identify, and getting them to the hospital for intervention. Strokes is something that we've seen a huge increase on over the last really four to five years is the number of stroke victims. I think it's a few things. We're identifying them much sooner and quicker by getting, having good response times. The fire departments and first responders are really well-trained on this now as well. So we're identifying them earlier on. And then our goal, because there's not a ton we can do pre-hospital-wise for these patients. They need to get to the hospital, they need to get clot-busting drugs, or they need to get into a surgery suite for intervention. So our goal really is 15 minutes for these types of patients, and we were at 16.11 last year. So something we're working on, we're striving towards, and scene time and working with our first responder partners to help us with that, to reduce that scene time and getting them to definitive intervention at the hospital quicker. So this charge is actually going in the opposite direction, it's going in a really good direction. So having the local trauma center right near backyard, we work, Dr. Jordan's on our board right now, and one of the thumping pieces he has at every single board meeting is how is our trauma scene times? Again, not much we can do for traumas in the field, but they need to get to that hospital, they need to get there as fast as they can when we have a true trauma victim. They're internally bleeding, they have multiple orthopedic injuries that need to be repaired. Not something we can do in the back of the ambulance. So the faster we can get them off that scene in our ambulance on the way to the hospital, the better the outcomes are. So we saw that number go down in 2017 from 20 minutes and 13 seconds, and we're all the way down to 10 minutes and 9 seconds in 2022. So really doing a really great job with that. And even though we've seen more volume, our volume's gone up quite a bit, and typically when you see more volume and have more of that work, you're going to become more proficient. So we've seen that kind of mirror itself as well. And the last one that we really look at as far as quality-wise is cardiac arrest. So we've seen that number go up, and when you talk about a cardiac arrest, it's really, we talked about the chain of survival. So early activation of the 911 system, getting high-quality CPR on that patient as quickly as possible. So we're working with our first responder groups to get there first, apply that AED, do some CPR on that individual prior to arrival. We take over, provide the paramedic level care, and hopefully have good outcomes at the hospital. National benchmark for that is 10%. We saw that dip down a little bit in 2021 to 12%, but we're back up to 18% in 2022. We have also been benchmarking against the American Heart Association's registry, so that's a national benchmark. So it looks at ambulance providers across the nation as well as locally, and we're well above the national standard when it comes to cardiac arrest survival rate. So something we're really proud of and something we continue to work on on a daily basis. And then critical care numbers. So actually, the critical care team has been moved to our headquarters right up in Manassia. So we actually have a critical care paramedic and a critical care RN now that is working out of the headquarters that responds into the City of Manassia on 911 calls. Very highly trained, very highly educated. Basically, the best care you can possibly provide in this industry is right out of Manassia now. So it's really cool that we've been able to move them down there. They're on 12-hour shifts now. So they're handling the interfacility transports that are out of the ICU, so they're really critically ill individuals, but they're also handling the 911 work in Manassia as well. So something cool and unique that's changed in the city that I wanted to share with you guys. With that, I'll take questions, and thank you guys again for having me.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming tonight. It's always a pleasure. I have a couple, a few questions.
Sure.
I was writing them down as you were giving this presentation. The first question I have is what kind of 12-hour shifts do your EMTs work?
Yes, what we do is we really look at, our call volume is a bell curve. So we kind of start getting busy right at 10:00. We'll peak around 4:00 with our call volume, we'll sustain that around till 8:00 and 9:00 at night, and then we dip down at night. So really after 2:00 a.m., there's not a high call volume within our service area. So we have ambulances that have 24-hour coverage that start at 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, and 7:00. And then we also have 12-hour ambulances that we staff during peak hours. So we have one that starts at 9:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m., and then 2:00 p.m., and then we cover those peak hours. So we'll ramp up our ambulances, add more ambulance when the demand is higher, and then we'll trickle it back down when the demand is lower.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Do the EMTs keep the same shifts?
Yep, EMTs, paramedics work in the same shift together. Yep.
They don't like, they don't move around from, or I'm sorry, do they, do they keep the same area, or do they move around?
Yep, good question. All of our full-time staff have a station that they're dedicated towards. We used to plop them around from station to station because the volume's so much different in the Fox Valley compared to our Wapakaw County station, just to get them more experienced. What we found is they struggle a lot with navigation. So when they go, 1,200 square miles is a lot to memorize, but when you have them only in the City of Manassia and covering some of the surrounding smaller townships and villages, they can become much more proficient with navigation, knowing the service area. And so we found a lot of value in that. So we went to permanent stations two years ago.
Yeah, working all great, I bet.
It is.
For the EMTs.
Yep.
Yeah, cool. So this kind, do you, well, I guess there's never a dumb question, but I got to use you guys a couple, a few times, but I never thought of this until you just brought it up, the insurance. So say, you know, you're at my house, and how do you know where to take me?
We have a patient destination algorithm that's part of our protocols. 95% of the time, it's patient preference. So tell us where you want to go, we're going to take you there. About 10% of the time, it's based off of the type of situation you're encountering. If you're in a traumatic event, we want to take you to the local Level 2 trauma center because those are where the experts are. If you're having a heart attack, we want to take you to Sanes or AMC because those are where the experts are. But the majority of the time, it's, patient destination is based on their preference.
Okay. And last one, cardiac arrest and heart attack, there must be a difference between the two?
Yep. So a cardiac arrest is your heart stops, is no longer working, right? We got to try to get it restarted. Where a STEMI or acute coronary syndrome is there's something happening within the vessels of the heart, usually an occlusion of some sort that is causing that chest pain because it's not getting the proper oxygen it needs to function. That's what's causing that chest pain. And that actually will show up on the EKG, and we'll see that, and we can see actually what wall of the heart is effective and where they need to go in and make the, put the stent in right from that EKG in the field.
And the heart attack?
Same, heart attack and a STEMI are kind of the same thing. It's just more of a medical term versus a late-person term.
Okay. The reason I ask that for me heavily, big time, about five years ago, so far, nobody, and it'll be interesting to hear what your answer is. So nobody in the medical field that I have mentioned this to has never seen it that high, and my potassium level went up to 9.7.
Sure.
So every muscle in my body froze up but my heart. My heart, fortunately, you know, I wear a couple chains, you know, was strong enough. But they, everybody said that, that, you know, at about 7, 7 level, you usually, you go into cardiac arrest. So why cardiac arrest and not a heart attack, do they say?
It's multifactorial, and you know, everybody's different. You know, lab values are variable. Some people have really bad outcomes at certain levels. My mother-in-law just had a sodium level that the doctor said he's never seen in his entire career, and she was fine and alert and talking. So every person's a little bit different. You should probably be thanking your lucky stars, you're sitting there tonight because that seems really, really high.
Absolutely. Thank the Lord in the morning, and thank him for a great day when I go to bed.
Right.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you guys for doing such a great job. I think your service and your presentation was outstanding tonight. So keep up the great work, and we're glad that you're in Manassia. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank you guys for locating in Manassia and providing such a great service to the area. I live in your downtown area. I'll hear a call, I'll hear the Station 35 unit go out, and you guys are always, you know, a few minutes behind them because of the time ship where the stations are located. But it always seems like you guys are all at about the same, same time level and everything. So we certainly appreciate, appreciate the response time in the city and the level of service you do provide for, for citizens. And also, you made comments about how well you work together with the fire department, with our first responders, and probably even our police department at times.
Yep.
If it's a, I forget, you guys get different classifications on the calls.
Yep.
It's a medical emergency, then it's everybody.
Yep, yep, yep.
So again, thank you for the high level of service you provide to our community.
You bet.
Okay, seeing no one else, thanks for coming tonight, Nick. It's always nice to see you guys. And next year, I have to remember to invite the health department to our little discussion. I forgot.
No problem.
Nancy normally put them together, and I didn't include Christine. So remind me next year if we don't do that.
Yeah, happy to come, and the mayor's got my contact information, so if you guys have any follow-up questions or would like to come see our place in Manassia, feel free to reach out. Okay, thank you.
Oh, the lighting committee. That was awesome. Thank you.
You bet.
Yes, definitely.
You bet.
I was reminded by Alderman Garde, so thank you.
There we go.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't think Nick is planning on staying for the whole meeting, but you're more than welcome if you want to. Item two is the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through H and communications I through O.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Good discussion, Stan?
Yes. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the chief for his annual report. It was very well done, and I'm sure he had a lot of help with it. But it reaffirms my feeling about our community, how safe we are. If you look at the stats, it just, we're lucky. The other night, a lady referred Manassia to being like Mayberry, and I agree as far as a nice, quaint, quiet, safe community to live in. And I appreciate the work that your department's been doing to facilitate that. I did have one other. I will leave it at that.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, it takes an outstanding department and leadership to do what you guys have done in excellent policing. And certainly, the numbers show that when you look at the U.S. crime rate and Wisconsin crime rate, we're a third of the U.S. crime rate and half of what the state of Wisconsin is. And in property crimes, it's about the, about the same again. So certainly, it is a safe community. I have Airbnb in town, and I always tell my guests that we have a very safe community, and a lot of them are coming from major cities, and they always like to hear that. I had a question or an observation, I guess, here on the, on the school system. And I would have thought, if somebody said to me, what level of, what level of education would we have the most calls to? I would have probably thought the high school or junior high school, and it's elementary schools. And I was very surprised by that. In fact, it's almost two to one for the high school. So it's, that certainly, that statistic stood out to me. And on your index report, I noticed that on traffic ticketing and things, the last two years was down. Was that in relationship to the COVID situation that was going on?
I don't know which mic you had back there, Tim, sorry.
No worries. Yes and no. Yes, obviously, there was a period of time in 2020 that we had a hiatus of most self-nation activities in the early days of COVID because we really weren't sure the transmissivity of it at that point. However, along that times too, we've also kind of changed our philosophy in traffic enforcement as well. As we all know, you and you folks know what it is too. We can sit out on the 1,200 block of Plank Road and write speeding tickets all day long if we so chose. So instead, we're taking a two-proton approach. One is trying to identify the areas or the hotspots where we have more crashes and trying to direct our traffic efforts in those areas, as well as, we also have a thing on our traffic program where we're really trying to respond to the areas where citizens have concerns on. So that's where we're ending up spending a fair amount of our enforcement time, which don't necessarily generate traffic stops, but it's monitoring the areas. So we can report back to that person saying, yep, we sat in the area of Takeaway 9th, and we spent, you know, whatever, 300 minutes out there and saw three violations, which resulted in one citation and two warnings, or something along those lines. So we're really kind of changing the philosophy, and one of the ways that that kind of seems to be holding to work right now is despite the fact that we had less traffic stops and less arrests or citations that were issued, the crash numbers stayed the same after COVID, which we knew that the year of COVID that people weren't driving as much, obviously, and the crash numbers went down. Where crash numbers were very similar last year, being kind of out of COVID. So we're still kind of monitoring and fine-tuning it. So yes and no. Certainly, it's changed a little bit from COVID, but again, making numbers to make numbers just doesn't seem to make sense. We want to do it where there's actually problems or issues by crashes or citizen complaints or issues.
Of course, this year, the council approved traffic cameras at Racine and Third and Appleton Road and Third. And when do you think those will be activated?
Yeah, those are ones that we are continuing to work on. Having infrastructure in the, in the ground, we're finding would be the absolute best way to go it, to go about it. We're finding that the way that we thought was going to be the best, we've brought in two other consultants, and in speaking with them, they're suggesting that might not be the best way to go. So we're really just trying to take a slow, cautious approach to this because we don't want to invest that kind of money and do the wrong thing and build a system off of something that won't be scalable for the future. So it's certainly something that our staff and Public Works is working on diligently. I mean, we're having meetings, it seems like every other week to try to solve what the best way to do it would be. So our goal would be, hopefully by the end of summer, I would say that they'd be up.
Okay. I tell the story, when I first got on the council in the early '90s, Chief Stanky, we used to talk about at that time, people running a late- we used to talk about at that time, people running a lit yellow light. And, uh, now I think we all, uh, if we take a yellow light, uh, you look in your mirror and you think, that guy's never going to make that one. And sure as heck, they, they're almost running south, they are running south of red lights now. And, uh, it seems to be, uh, more and more. But the one I keep hearing about more, more often lately is, uh, completely disregarding stop signs almost. Where before people might slow it down and kind of power break through them. And now it's ten, fifteen miles an hour that they're just rolling through them. And, uh, it seems to be kind of a new trend in the last, uh, year and a half or so. And maybe through COVID, uh, uh, people got more anxious or something. But, uh, uh, my neighbor has a Four Seasons porch and, uh, he gives me the, the weekly report on, uh, on, uh, stop sign violations. So, uh, public, members of the public do, do monitor it. And certainly I, I've seen this this last, uh, a year and a half more and more often. So, but, uh, excellent report. And it all comes down to great policing, great leadership, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to echo Alderman Taylor and Alderman Sevenek's on the police report data. Chief, that was one of the finest reports I've seen in probably twenty-some years of my business. So you set the bar. So I really appreciate what, what you did there and your staff. Thank you.
No problem. I, I'd be remiss if I didn't throw her name out at some point here from the comments that are being made. But our new community liaison Shelby Burkles is the one who did ninety-nine percent of the work. I mean, everyone had the stuff that they added to the report, but she was the chef that baked this whole thing up and presented it. So, yeah, very impressed. She, she certainly has taken it to another level this year. So we appreciate her work on it.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we go any further, we should thank our, uh, special guest this evening for helping us today, filling in. I looked over, it didn't look like our city attorney. So thanks again for, uh, coming in. We really appreciate it. The guy's retired and he still comes in and helps the city of Manassia. And, and he, he's not even from Manassia. So we appreciate that. The other item I had, and I guess my question might be for Tom. In the, uh, communications on, in landmarks, I'm starting to get a little concerned about, painting buildings, especially brickwork. And, um, I noticed that in your minutes, uh, they just mentioned that they wanted to paint their building. Is it not the brick part, but the, just the block part on, on the side or what?
Thank you, Mayor. It's the block side that runs through the walkway, which is already painted.
Yep.
And it's all popped and peeling.
It didn't really indicate that in the minutes. And I know that there's another building being proposed downtown to be painted. And I just don't like us painting brick.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Alderman Taylor.
I too echo that, uh, there's another building that's going to paint down here. And I don't mind if they paint that, the fourth story that they're adding to it. But we certainly see what LLCs do to the city at times. And, uh, by painting a building today and twenty years from now or ten years from now, we all know that, uh, when you paint that nice brick, it's going to peel. And, um, it's certainly, uh, there's a building in the, uh, behind the Faith Technology Building back there that is peeling all the time because somebody painted it. And, um, I, 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 I don't think that should be part of the, any restoration project or facade improvement grants because, uh, uh, the nature of that and the nature of the LLCs at this time. And, uh, just like to mention to the attorney, if you want to come out of retirement like, uh, um, Tom Brady, we have a retirement in, uh, May. So think about it. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item F is public comments and a matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes? Brian, if you'd like to.
All right, this is on.
It is.
Thank you all. My name is Brian Kabeline. I am currently a judicial court commissioner in Winnebago County. What that means is I do judicial intake for the judges. They gave me power to decide things for them. So this is going on my eighth year now where I do all the folks that get arrested overnight in Winnebago County, juveniles that get run away or taken away. I do mental health hearings. Uh, that we were hearing about folks that have to be transported by ambulance to the hospitals sometimes, whether it's Winnebago Mental Health, uh, or any of the old local hospitals. I also do juvenile intake citations for most of the county outside of the folks that have municipal courts and probate. I am born and raised in Manassia. I live in Nina currently. I work on Ashgosh. Outside of what I do in the courtroom, I'm also chairman of the Winnebago County Safe Streets Committee, which is the committee that oversees all diversion programs in Winnebago County. Everything from drug courts down to, uh, local police officers working with at-risk youth. So my committee or the committee that I serve on and that I'm chairman of oversees the funding, making sure that they're operating efficiently appropriately. Uh, I am appointed by the Supreme Court to the Judicial Conduct Advisory Committee. That means I'm the one commissioner that works with seven other judges to give both formal and informal ethics opinions to, uh, Wisconsin judges. So if they do have questions about things they can or can't do, they can submit those to our committee. Uh, I'm a rotarian. I've been doing that seven years. I am, uh, on the Highway Commission, which again, studies the fatalities that we have on the highways in the, every quarter. I'm on the Ashgosh Truancy Task Force. I feel like I'm forgetting one. Oh, Conflict Resolution as well. So I've been keeping myself busy. I'm very, very involved in the community. Again, lifelong resident outside of going to school. My wife's, uh, currently school social worker at Nina, but she started her career in Manassia. So we're very invested. And, uh, I'm running for Circuit Court Judge Branch Three. It's Judge Key. Judge Key is retiring and choosing not to run again. So the election will be April fifth. And I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. Thank you all for the time.
Thank you for coming tonight, Brian. If you want to leave those out on the desk out in the lobby, people can grab those on their way out if they're interested.
I appreciate it. You all have a great night, okay?
Is there, is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Hi, Sandra DeBil Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I'm not running for office, but I've been tempted. Due to not having public, uh, public comment on administration personnel or Public Works, I'm going to move things around. Under administration, there's the resolution to close TIFF nine and distribute the excess increment to the overlying taxing entities. I'm all for it. I'm very glad it was not designated toward the Strong Neighborhoods Program. Under personnel, um, there is a notation regarding the pending retirement of our current attorney. With that, I would like to remind the council, this is a council appointment. And for years, this has been a hybrid position of attorney slash HR. I would like to see that separated again. You're going to have a very hard time trying to find someone to fill both roles. We really didn't find one the last time around. Um, and we do have someone who does HR currently in, in another role. I would also like to reemphasize, and I've talked about it for years, while you are interviewing candidates, that you do not eliminate the possibility of a legal firm, a firm that specializes in municipal law, that can cover annexations and mitigation and everything and everything and has expertise in whatever you need. We do it for IT. We do, the, the current attorney has a consultant she works with. So it's not uncalled for. Our neighboring communities of Fox Crossing, Harrison, Waverly, all rely on outside firms. And as you know, we are now landlocked due to that. So they know what they're doing. And I would suggest not only, um, the service that they provide, but it could also be cost-saving in the end. So I strongly recommend that. Then on to Public Works, I have more questions than answers regarding, there's two proposals here they have no name on. I'm assuming they're coming from the mayor for honorary street name designation policy. And they're very similar. And the other one is neighborhood street sign policy. The difference, from what I understand, the honorary street name would be a person's name, a small sign above the existing street sign. My problem in reading this is number one, it cannot be designated to anyone prior to, ten years prior than today. I made a quick little list of people it would eliminate. Smith, Reed, Gilbert, Bonta, Sons and Brenner, Berksrum, Whiting, Strange. We have two Medal of Honor recipients, Elmer Burke, Kenner Stump. None of those people would qualify for this. So I'm questioning why that ten-year buffer is in there. The other, we have two of these in place already that were designated for sports. One baseball, one football. That was not, I, I think that might have gone through the council at the time, but we didn't have a policy in place. So I'm questioning why this is coming about now. Also, this one, the, the designee or the people who are designating it have to have three references. It has to be paid by them and go to the mayor, Public Works and the council approval. The other one is a neighborhood street sign, which sounds much larger. Not just the little thing on the top. Oh, also the prior one, the ironic part is Dody Island already has these signs. And they're not white and blue. And they didn't go through the council. So I'm wondering if this is to clear that up because it's already says that they're grandfathered in. See, I think the mayor had something to do with it. The other one is a neighborhood sign that sounds much larger. There, the first ten are going to be paid by the city. And there, um, anything installed now is already grandfathered in. You have no say. I look back, okay, let me just tell you a little story. Maybe I get this from my brother-in-law. Way back, I don't know if any of you remember when four forty-one was first constructed, the new highway from Manassia to the north side of Appleton, a beautiful drive. You could drive that, there wasn't a billboard anywhere. To this day, there's no billboards. And that was very controversial. It came about because if you take Nina to Fond du Lac, every five feet, there's a billboard. Manassia is overdone with signage. We're just adding to it. These are nice feel goods, but I don't know if they're really necessary, especially the neighborhood ones, especially when they're encompassing large swaths of property where many of the people are not part of these neighborhoods. In fact, one of these neighborhoods is actually meeting Thursday to discuss their sign before you, you guys even contemplate it. So I'm just wondering if this is, there's something more to this than what's being said. And there's no cost estimate for the neighborhood signs either. Okay, then just on to the agenda, really quick because I'm sure I'm under the stopwatch. I also would like to thank the chief of police for his report. Very well done. To me, the one thing that really stuck out though was that code enforcement is no longer part of the police department. It's been designated to community development. Community development does not enforce code. They do not, they don't want to write citations. They want to be welcoming. They want to attract business and people to come here. They don't want to be the bad guy. It's a terrible proposal. It needs to go back to, to the police department that know what the rules and regulations are and can get down on some of these signage issues that we are having and junk cars and everything else. Alderman Sevenek mentioned a woman the other day compared Manassia to Mayberry, which is, some parts are very true. But another woman, it might have been the same one, considered it gritty. That was her definition. And there are places in this city that are gritty. And that's why code enforcement really needs to be part of the police department. Under your communications, there was supposedly a Bonta Village Lofts and Brin construction update. It was not part of the packet, at least online. So I don't know if you got a hard copy of it, but you approved it and the public has no knowledge what the update is. Then we have some amendments. There's a TIFF amendment to the development agreement between Nina and the Lake Shore Ridge Apartments. These are out by Lake Shore, Lake Park Road. My first question is, are the neighbors aware of the change in this project? It's getting much larger than what was originally proposed. More traffic, more parking, more noise. Another problem I have with this is that the cap on the payment was removed and just simply twenty percent. With the cost of materials and construction and labor going up, your payout just went up a minimum of twenty percent. And also, if at the end of the TIFF, we haven't paid them, they want a lump sum payment. I mean, where are we going to come up with the money if, if it doesn't work out? I think we're looking at a problem there. Real quick, I'm not real familiar with the development between Atkins Group, but I have questions regarding the pond. Apparently, according to the memo from the city attorney, they're insistent on having docks on this pond. And this is a question for a director of public works. Can you have docks on a stormwater pond? To me, it seems like the stormwater pond is to, to accumulate the sediment and needs to be dredged every ten years or so. And this, they're trying to make into a lake. So I'm kind of questioning with the DNR and permitting. Under ordinances and resolutions, really quick, there's the cancellation of outstanding checks. There is one that I'm questioning just because I believe that person is leasing property from the city. And we're going to write off twenty thousand dollars if I have this wrong. Someone may want to ask about that. And I'm hoping, oh, there's the, using the ARPA funds, a hundred and fifty thousand to go after grants. To me, that sounds like a huge amount of money. And these are grants that we should have been working on for the last ten years. And what have we been waiting for? And now we want to use ARPA funds to pay, to write a grant that we may be lucky if we get fifty thousand dollars out of? I don't know. And lastly, um, the mayor has an appointment. I'm hoping, just like last week, that, that there, this person was on the top of the list. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any items that you would like separated this evening? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to go through all of them. So at this time, Mayor, I'll move for the approval of the minutes of the common council of three, seven, twenty-two.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item two is a payment. Alderman Langdon?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to accept the payment to MGI Building Services, contract unit number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight. That's for the public works facility called Storage in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars, fifty cents. Final?
Is there a second? So motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Item three is a change order. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the, uh, uh, motion to accept the change order to Northeast Asphalt Inc., contract unit number twenty twenty-one dash ten. That's for the street construction and rehabilitation deduct in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, sixty cents. Change order number one.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item four is a payment. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, mayor. I'll make the motion to accept the payment to Northeast Asphalt Inc., contract unit number 2021-10. That's for the street reconstruction and rehabilitation, the amount of $42,853.21, and that is payment number seven.
So motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll for March 4th through March 17th. Alderman Grady?
All right, thank you, mayor. At this time, I make the motion for the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 3/4/22 through 3/17/22, in the amount of $2,362,839.42.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, mayor. Ms. Taylor had a question on one of the checks. Jennifer, I'm sure you were paying attention and had that one.
I don't think there was a question on the checks. I think it was on the write-offs.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was, oh, yes. Okay, thank you, James. I've, I'm going to make a personal request. I think it's too much for us to do these accounts payable and payroll on our laptops here. I know I had like three or four that I wanted to talk to Jennifer about, and then when I get ahold of her, or she finally gets ahold of me, I have to turn on my computer and search. And then, the other day, one of the aldermen asked me a question about something, and so I'm going to request that I get a copy in the future, because if I have a hard copy, I can underline those things, and then I'll be better prepared for the community. Right now, it's become extremely difficult for, past few accounts payable and payroll, we've been spending some odd dollars that just appear each month, and I think they're high and they're ridiculous. We're doing things for, like, will kill, stuff like that. I don't get the appropriate answers when we have Johnson Controls coming in and doing inspections on top of inspections for, I keep being told, for the sprinkler systems. Well, you don't need to be doing that all the time. I think we're just being billed. Also, for fire extinguishers, I mean, the cost involved, and I did contact the fire chief about this, and maybe in time, we can have our own people do these things. With the sprinkler system, you have to be certified, and they're going to be working on that, but I think there's a lot of things that we just routinely pay that's getting to the point where I think, because we're government, we're just paying that bill. And I want to have, I want to look at these things a little closer, so that's all I have to say on that for now, and I'll follow up more. But in the future...
So if you want a hard copy...
Haley, I need a hard copy for now.
Just request, and you can come pick it up.
Yep. You can deliver it, mayor.
My car only leaves the driveway once a week, so I'd have to charge you mileage.
Well, I notice everyone else in the city does.
I do not. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
So we do have one beverage operator's license that was recommended for deferral?
Nice chair.
I don't know if Ms. Mulder is, I'm guessing Ms. Mulder is not here this evening. Tim, did you have any comments on this before we move forward with this?
Yes, I'll take it.
Yeah, the chief is going to speak first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting that you have the mic that I turn on.
At some point, maybe.
Because I can't see it from this point.
So, yes, I am. So the person who put in for this, we have had some conversations with her, and I think this is exactly why we've recommended to change the rules to this. What is on her record is a felony, but it is from 2004. As Pam would give you the speech on it, and I'm sure Attorney Godluiski could do the same thing, because she has the felony, technically by statute, that would be a denial. However, you also have to look at the timeframe and the applicability of the offense to bartending or working, actually, she would be a convenience store person, but either way, is that really impactful almost 20 years later? So this is one of those historically that we would have denied just for the mere fact that it had the felony, and then it would have been brought back to this body in more times than not, and rightfully so, you folks would have overturned it. So as far as our position on it goes, is, it is certainly, one by statute, that we need to notify you of that felony, but we do not believe that there is an issue or relevancy to the offense that she had on it that would preclude her from getting the license.
Alderman Repella, does that give you enough information to make a motion?
Uh, yes, I'll make a motion for the beverage, beverage operators license application for the 2021 to 23 licensing period. I'll make a motion to deny Ms. Amy Mulder. Oh, let's see. No, I'm sorry, to approve, to approve Amy Mulder.
Okay. So there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Grady for the approval of the operator's license? Discussion? Did you have anything else ready?
No, I did not. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenek?
I just want to say that I'm okay with the motion, but the individual, if they felt strong enough about this license, that they would have been here this evening. They didn't appeal. You know, that's pretty amazing that we're going out of our way to give her it, and she didn't have the common sense to be here. So that's interesting. Go ahead, chief.
The only thing I can say to that is, Ms. Mulder is going through a pretty rough time. She's currently homeless, and she really needs this job to get back up on her feet. So she may not have the means to have come to the meeting tonight.
All right, I appreciate that.
No problem. So I didn't want it to be like that she was being disrespectful to the body, though.
And is it, you had mentioned earlier, too, that it's potentially for maybe a convenience store or something to that effect, or so...
Yeah, 1515 Appleton Road is...
And I always kind of look at that differently, too.
Yeah, 1515. Appleton Road is where she was planning on going.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? This is to approve, yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Item three is the third amendment to the developers' agreement with Lake Shore Ridge Apartments. A motion or discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, mayor. I have, I'd ask if the gentleman could step up to the mic and ask for unanimous consent to be able to question the individuals.
Question? Sounds nefarious.
What, question? What's wrong with that?
It just sounds like questioning at a court rather.
Well, I mean, they're the only ones that are going to be able to answer my questions.
Anyhow.
So, okay. There they are.
They're hiding behind a TV.
I always appreciate you guys do come to the meetings, but of course, if I were in your shoes, I would be here, too. I think what Ms. Taylor said about informing the public is important. We had quite a few people here last time when your first building was built. But the thing is, is that that first building has been a kind of a pillar to the community. I think you did a great job, and it's a beautiful project. My concern with the increase is not so much about more traffic and those kind of things, but we're, are you going to finish phase two before you do phase three? Because the condo thing isn't even broken ground yet. So I'm concerned about that, that you, your bread and butter is coming from the other end, and now you want to increase the number of units. And then I hear later on, you guys come here and say, we're not going to be building the other condos.
Sure. Is that to us, or did you want to...
That's to you.
To jump in? Okay.
Go ahead. I'd rather hear it from them.
Sure. So the condos will be breaking ground as soon as the weather permits?
Okay.
And those, I believe, will be about a six-month construction time. So I guess with regards to the phasing, those would be complete before the second apartment building would be constructed or completed.
If I would have let Sam answer that question, we'd still be talking. So thank you. Remember last meeting? I asked a single question, almost a yes or no, and we sat here for 15 minutes. That's all I have. I mean, I don't know if I 100% agree with your assessment about that you have to have additional more units in order for it to work. You were able to rent out the current facility within months, and I just think, really, in reality, it's a better money-making opportunity for you guys at this point, and there's nothing wrong with free enterprise. But I understand supply chain stuff and material costs and all that, but we've been dealing, we've been dealing with that kind of stuff our whole life. And so I guess if you hadn't put up a good product from the beginning, and the things you have been doing in the city of Minasha, I might have thought a little differently, but you proved yourself, so I appreciate it.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, mayor. You know, when I saw the phase two with the eight condos, I liked that project. And why are we reducing down to the six condos?
That's not on the agenda, though, tonight.
It's not on there, mayor?
This is the second apartment building.
Okay. I thought there was a reduction on the six condos.
There was, but we discussed that.
Okay.
I already approved that a couple months ago.
Why are we, are we going to be going up in height, another floor, or a wider footprint?
Sure. The apartment buildings, the second apartment building will be a mirror of what you see as phase one or the current building there, if that makes sense. So it won't be much if anything different than the current building that was constructed.
Oh, we're going from 30-some to 50-some, correct?
The length or the layout of the building has shifted maybe from the initial plan that you saw, and again, maybe to Alderman Sevenek's point, it is a true kind of reflection of the current market and pricing that we're seeing right now, along with the demand and our ability to lease those up, we think, very efficiently, so.
Okay. And then, the underground parking, is that one unit per unit, or is that, is there...
I believe the ratio will be yes, a little more than one to one, similar to the current constructed phase one of our project.
Okay. All right. Sam, do we have to notify any neighbors of this?
So the current process right now, we're looking at the development agreement. So before these guys go back to the design table to fully compile that plan set to bring it forward, that's currently, they're asking for permission to do that, and unless this development agreement amendment would get approved, that would either consider them from, A, doing the building as originally presented, or doing that second phase, that second building at all. So with that, this apartment building would require a special use permit, similar to the last one. So again, once they kind of get through the design phase of that, they would submit for a site plan and special use permit, which does require a public hearing. Similar to the last time, there's not going to be a whole lot of residents that fall within that 100 feet, but we did adopt that policy to put out the sign out on the front of community way.
Okay. And then, I heard some rumblings, I made a mistake on the condos, the eight condos. That's part of their project, too?
Correct.
Okay. And what was the change on that? Do we already go through that from eight to six?
Yes, that was a few months ago, this past fall.
Okay. All right, thanks, Sam.
Yep.
Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, mayor. Real quickly, Sam, Exhibit C, can you explain a little on the estimate?
We have, yeah, certainly. So the Exhibit C included with the third amendment is basically an updated of the estimated payment schedule. So again, they're looking at 95% performance incentive, so basically, once a project comes online, it has a leg year that it gets valued at, and then a following year where they actually would pay taxes, and then we would look at that performance payment on a annual basis.
We had a different payment schedule before?
Yes, in the original agreement, I think it's, I could find the page number for you if you wanted. Let's see, so the existing payment schedule was on page 145 of the overall council packet. So basically, because the overall value of the project would be increasing, we're running to the tail end of that development agreement, which is where the potential performance incentive payment would come into play, or the final lump sum of the last year. If you will note that this project does stand alone, so if you see under the total revenues, I believe that's about the third column, over that lifespan, it brings in just under $4 million. So even at, you know, the roughly 20% or that end of the, the end of the life, we're at roughly, you know, 3.8 million. So again, we're really close to hitting that. Unfortunately, we just run out of the years to pay that off in the standard format.
Okay, well, I only have one payment schedule.
So page 126 of the common council packet has the updated payment schedule?
I have an, I don't know, someone else help me here. I have an Exhibit C, estimated payment schedule.
Yep, and there's two Exhibit Cs. So there's staff memo, there's a third amendment to the development agreement, and there's one Exhibit C.
But I don't have another printout of...
Keep going, Stan.
Payment.
All the way down, page 145.
I went all the way down. You should have had them together. See, this is the problem I have, but this is the, so this exhibit... I can't put them side by side and look at them. I got to scroll down 50 pages to find it. And you don't, and I'm not even sure which one is the updated and which one is, no, see, I don't have it.
Keep going, keep going, Stan.
Oh, boy. I'll just have it.
You slid over, there you go. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going.
Yeah, keep going. Right there.
There it is. Okay. I might do what James is doing, have a printout packet.
That's fine, you can do that.
Because I can't compare. Now, I want to look at them side by side. So now I got to scroll back up 50 pages to look at the side by side. All right, so are you on the last one, then?
Excuse me.
So the new updated is the last one?
No, it's the first one, so again...
That's where I was.
Exactly. So the memo, the third amendment, and then the Exhibit C, the updated Exhibit C is with the third amendment, so that's why those two are together. Everything else is past approval, has approved.
Okay. All right, I'm going to stay on this Exhibit C, and let's go through it again.
Certainly. So, so again, you can kind of see tax increment, so that's kind of the annual increment that is collected, and then the total revenues, column three. So overall, over the life of this project through those years, we're creating, or they're paying in roughly just under $4 million, so the $3.97 million. The next column over the, to the right of that first solid line is a performance incentive. So typically, again, we pay on a portion of the payments. So again, this development agreement, it's 95% of that. So those go through those annual payments, and then at the tail end of that... then at the tail end of that, um, as you can see, we only hit, uh, 3.793 million is your normal payment. So we are short, uh, just under, or just over $100,000. So again, so that, for the last year payment to reach the overall 20%, that last year payment has to be $527,000 versus the 415. But as stated, the, the 3.97 million, uh, overall, the project stands on itself. So there's, there's still funding available from the existing projects, so the 5% that we left on the table. If, at the end of that payment year, or the end of that term, that project still stands on its own legs. And of course, this is all, I, I do have to throw in, this is all estimates based upon the value of the current building, the value of the condos, and the value of the future building as well. So again, this certainly could fluctuate, but we feel strongly that, uh, again, the project can stand on its own, as well as tax increment to District Number 12 is very, very healthy.
So are you saying that you feel that by adding the added units, the 18, that it was based on, like, this payment schedule?
No.
Not just on that, but obviously the, all the other things I had mentioned earlier?
I think I understand your, the reason we're upping the unit count is to, to essentially make this pri- or help this project become financially feasible.
I realize that. But had that, so as far as the payment schedule goes, what in, what, how much is the increase, then? From before? I don't, I can't do it side by side.
So it's, uh, the previous would have been capped at about 3.4.
Okay.
Um, so now we're, we're gonna be sitting.
So $527,000.
Uh, a- again, it, it's all dependent on, on the final project, but you're, you're pretty close to that 3.9. Uh, so again, what, what they're asking us to do is they want to build a more expensive project, and unless we would remove the max of 3.4, it's not financially feasible for them to do that. So again, we're just kind of sticking with that 20%, and that's pretty standard with all of our development agreements that we do approve within the city.
Yeah, I remember you saying that before. Okay, sorry for my being upset. It's just, this is starting to get ridiculous. This is big stuff. You know, we're talking, you know, millions of dollars here, and, um, we've gone, because of COVID, we've gone to this system, and, and trust me, I'm probably the most computer savvy up here. It's just that, this is, this is, uh, I got my answer at the very end there, you know, with the $527,000 difference here. So. I don't know. I just.
And may.
When are you looking, when are you looking?
And Sam can, again, maybe explain this a bit further. But as he mentioned, because of the price or size of the project increase, it's relative to the TIF. So the 20% still stays the same. It's, as it's structured as a PEGO TIF, it's not like we're asking for more money to make it work. It's still relative to the project.
I realize it's a PEGO, PEGO, TIF. You're very fortunate that you're in a community that's allowing for this kind of thing, because there's a lot, a lot of communities that don't understand TIF or, or my constituency, and they feel that you're getting free money. So, all right.
Would it, would anyone else have questions, or?
I think there's a couple more here, so.
Sure.
Alderman Pella?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is probably for Sam. Sam, I'm looking at page 130, and I'm just a little confused. Um, let me know when you're at 130. Lakewood, it, this deals with the Lake Shore Ridge Apartments, but then we look down at letter A, where it says, "Developer wishes to acquire developed real property located at 600 Lake Park Road and 620 Lake Park Road." Those aren't on that Community Way where their apartments are. So where is this Lake Park Road 600 and 620?
So that's the original development agreement. At the time we executed this, Community Way did not exist. So those were the lots associated with that project.
Okay, but they, they, okay, I mean, these two apartments aren't even on Lake Park Road because Community First abuts Lake Park Road.
But before Community Way went in, they would have been addressed to Lake Park Road because it was all private roads at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much. I was just, thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Langton?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, sorry, I had to finish right. Um, so, let's see. So you're building a more expensive complex here. The unit's gonna be the same price, or are those, are you, it's gonna be raised in price? And where out there you as developers are seeing that you'll be able to fill them?
Sure. So if you're referring to our rental rates?
Yes.
Uh, they will be in line with our current or existing Phase One of the project. So you could expect a very similar rental rate, um, obviously with, uh, kind of market increases as time goes along. Um, and we were able to, to fill up. We're 100% full on Phase One, so we do feel there's a, a great demand for this specific type of product. So.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, that answered, I had three of them, but, um, that answered all three. Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oops.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to recommend council approval of the Third Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Manasha and Lake Shore Ridge Apartments, LLC, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Did you have any other disc? Randy, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, right now, if we approve this, then do the citizens have a chance to voice their opinions and things like that, and far, as far, or is this, once we vote today, is it a good, good to go?
So as Director Schrader was saying, there will be a public hearing for the special use permit, but that would, but the development agreement would be approved.
Okay.
But once you approve the development agreement, it's pretty unlikely you're not gonna approve this special use permit.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion, a second. Pardon? Kind of does, yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Are you on time schedule?
There's, well, they're not gonna put in the work, as Director Schrader was saying, unless we're giving them.
Did you have another question?
I just said, you have a time schedule. You're looking at.
Uh, we would like.
That's what we do tonight, and then we have a public hearing. We say, oh, thank you. We, we like your opinion, but we already have an agreement. See what I'm saying? This is why I'm getting upset, because we're, we're, I don't think we're doing this in the proper manner.
Maybe I don't under, what's the question?
Well, the thing is, is we're going to, we're, we're gonna, oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was on.
So before we have public input, we're gonna already approve this, and then when the people come in to share their opinion, we've already basically made a commitment. So that's where I have an issue. I want to see this project, trust me.
Sure. I, I, maybe I just don't understand the question that would be directed at us on that.
You still don't?
No.
Because the public, you recall last time, they were, that we filled the gallery here.
Yep.
Okay, now tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and approve this before the public has a say in the matter?
I think to Sam's point, this would be approving the development agreement. There's still additional approvals that would include the, the neighbors specifically.
Maybe to work on the, the development agreement before it's signed, or what?
And, and I think what you're looking at is, how do we improve this process in the future? Not necessarily with this one, because again, even if it's not 54 units.
Because we had one in, in, already in the past.
Yeah. And even if it's not 54 units, the development agreement has already been approved for 34 units. Again, so today, what we are talking about is, is just that. Um, I understand that, but that's like bait and switch for the, for the people that live out there. We thought that, you know, they were gonna come in with 30-plus units, not 50-plus units. Just, I'm, I'm just trying to make a point here. I, regardless, I'm voting aye, but I have to be fair to the people out there that may not be aware of, of this issue.
Sure.
And, um, and, and for me personally, I don't think it's an issue, because I don't live there. But for them, it's an issue.
Sure.
And, uh, that's, you know, where I'm coming from.
I guess I, I don't know if this is the right time to say it, or, you know, in the future, if this were to be approved, but similar to Phase One, we would do and will do everything we can to, to appease the neighbors and, and create a, a second or additional phase that complements Phase One.
And that's why I'm saying you proved yourself already to me. The project you built is probably one of the best ones I've seen in the valley. The valley? Oh, no, I'm not gonna postpone. No. I've just, I want you to be aware where I am with this and the, and the council, and, um, we can move forward. I'm sorry.
Alderman Pella?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, my, uh, individual who's running against me is running on his dislike, and the rest of the people on Cristella's dislike to the apartment complex that you built. Um, so adding this will fuel the fire for the April 5th election to, and I'm gonna vote no for it, just because my constituents dislike it, and, um, I need to support their views. So I'm on TV. I am voting no, people on Cristella. So I can do only one vote. Thank you. So.
Alderman Langton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make, make sure, I'm sure you will, but we have the public comments that you guys will be here for that also. So the room will be packed, and, um, there'll be hopefully questions and answers, and that you'll be involved so that they see, hey, those developers are here and showing us and this and that. So.
Though we hope it's less than the first time. We completely understand and, and obviously respect the process. So we will be here to answer questions or address concerns.
Thank you.
Yep.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries five, two.
Thanks for coming tonight, guys.
Oh, we got another one, man.
There's not a tie. There's an odd number of people.
Thank you, Scotty.
Yeah.
How can we see the staring for it?
Item four is to, uh, motion to accept and spend the law enforcement special funding grant. Do we have a motion?
Was there, uh?
There, there is a recommended motion in there.
And I.
I think it just says, "Accept and spend," correct?
Yes. Someone else have it? Go ahead. Thank you.
Alderman Schmidt?
Um, yes. I will make the motion that we approved to accept and spend the $52,118.85 in funding provided by Governor Evers' investment in safer communities.
Second.
So motion, a second. Is there discussion? Did you have any other discussion, Ann?
No.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven, zero.
Item five is the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Is there a motion this evening?
Go ahead, go ahead, because the computer's not working here and.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to allocate the use of $150,000 of the ARPA funds to facilitate, um, citywide grant writing.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is it up to? Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think for the people at home, Mayor, uh, someone should explain, uh, what we're looking at with this, with this money, you know, what avenues that we're going at.
So we did have a workshop last Wednesday discussing potential uses for ARPA funds. And one of the topics of discussion that evening was that we should look to expand those funds by seeking additional grants that those funds could be used as matching grant, matching funds for. So we would look at outsourcing and hiring grant writers in a number of different areas, um, both for capital, public works-type projects, parks-type projects, uh, in general, things that would be a capital project that would not add staff or additional, um, cost in future years. So that's, that's what we're looking to do with this. We don't have specific people or projects at this point, but there is a significant amount of money out there right now through the ARPA program, especially in the public works area, that we would like to continue working to find additional funds to help the city.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, that workshop was, I think we were all impressed by how many members of the public showed up. So it's always good to, uh, involve the public in decisions of, uh, especially with the ARPA funds. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. This was the first thing that, uh, our, our group agreed that we should do. And, I mean, I, I felt that the 150 was a, a good starting point, and it shouldn't obligate us if we need to bring forward if we had to do more. Because look at the grant writing that we did for Water Street, and then we ended up receiving $2.1 million. So it's worth it.
Alderman Grady?
Uh, thank you. Could you also touch on, Mayor, what it costs to, to write a grant? Around, you know?
It all depends on what type of grant you're looking at. Some of the more simple grants that Public Works was just working on were in the $3,000 range, but larger grants, I'm not sure, did we get pricing for the idle site, not idle sites, the, um, environmental grant? They were significantly more than that. I'm looking at you, Sam.
What, 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 what was the Water Street one?
Yeah. So the Water Street quarter, we did have a consultant on board. Um, I know the mayor played a huge role in drafting that. I don't know the exact cost.
That one, we did a grant request for both Lawson and Water Street, and because it was a fairly simple grant, he did it.
Two for one?
Yes. Um, but you had the grant that Stantec ended up writing for us for environmental. And I know we got some prices on others that I think were in the 15-plus thousand dollar range, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. I, I think they, they certainly can range up to, to 10, $15,000, just depending on the complexity, but your average will probably be three to five.
So we put $150,000 in there. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to spend it if we can't find good projects to look for.
Projects that cost us more money to write a grant.
No. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Yeah. Motion carries seven, zero.
Item J is held over business. Uh, this was tabled a month or two back. So the first item that we would need is to have a motion to remove from the table. If someone wishes to do that. Alderman Sevenek?
I'll make a motion to remove from the table the, uh, development agreement with Atkins Development Group.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion is back on the table. And, you know, I forgot to look to see if there was a motion. So we will just create a new motion this evening if there wasn't one. And Mr. Atkins is here this evening. If people have questions for him, we would be happy to try to get those answered. Alderman Sevenek?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if you would allow me to just make an opening statement that might answer a lot of questions for everyone.
Sure.
As most of you know, I've been in negotiation with the city for.
Talk to the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Usually my boy. Usually my voice is booming enough. We've been in negotiation with the city for the better part of a year regarding our Woodlawn Cottage's development. As many of you know, there was an original 19 lots, okay, that had already been plotted and approved that we've been building on and actually are doing very well with. Okay, this is regarding the undeveloped land to the south of the property. Okay, so anyway, we've worked through all the various issues with the city and then there were some kind of ulterior issues, in particular with the Corps of Engineers. What this centered on was the extension of Kelly Lake Drive. It was very important to the city that Kelly Lake Drive be able to be extended as a second means of access to development, and I respect that. From my point of view, I was all for Kelly Lake Drive, provided I could put homes on the street. You might understand, I didn't want to pay for a street that I couldn't put homes on. So the sticking point was interpretation of wetlands. Under the Trump administration, there was a very liberal interpretation of wetlands. And with the onset of the Biden administration, the interpretation of wetlands had become much more restrictive. And there was a period of time where this was just in limbo. So approximately two weeks ago, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, we agreed to split the cost of the street if for some reason the Corps wasn't able to rule favorably on this. Now subsequently, within the last week, we've received communication from the Corps that they're going to go back to their original interpretation, okay? And that was precipitated by a letter the Corps had given to McMahon Civil Engineers approximately two years ago that they ruled they had no jurisdiction two years ago. So the communication we received a week ago is the Corps will stand behind that original interpretation saying that they have no jurisdiction. So we have that verbally. We don't have it in writing yet. Okay, so the development agreement as it stands right now is that, you know, if for some reason this doesn't come through, we'll split the cost of the street. But we fully expect within the next month, we will have the approval that we can put homes on the street and then it becomes a non-issue. So I think it's addressed whatever the eventualities is, but the strong feeling is that within the next month, this will be taken care of. From our point of view, we need to move forward with this quickly. We're losing valuable construction season. You're probably all seeing in the headlines what's happening with interest rates. And then in particular, unless I have the next 89 lots, I can't justify building a clubhouse and a pool. Okay, I want to get the clubhouse and the pool going for this building season. So thus the urgency to address this tonight. And then I also wanted to address the commentary that I heard from one of the residents lately, or earlier tonight, okay, on the issue of docks on the pond. But we're not necessarily insistent on docks on the pond. In fact, it's a relatively minor issue. But we have kind of an awkward type situation now where if we go through with the purchase of the land in the pond, we will own a pond where there's approximately 12 people in Randy Rappel's district that already have docks on the pond, okay? And so they're going to have docks on the pond that they don't own. And I'm going to tell people that own the pond that they can have docks. So that's kind of an awkward situation and it would probably be tough to deal with. So I would ask to just at least table that particular issue or just remove it from the development agreement for this time until we can adopt language that can address both issues. Both us putting in docks, like which I said, we're not particularly emotional about, but I guarantee you the people that already have docks will be very emotional about it. With that, I'll shut up and give everyone a chance to ask questions.
Alderman Sevenek, did you have a question?
Yes, I have several, actually. You might as well stay up there. No, you stay up there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So there's quite a bit of language in here that changes particular dates to the wording as soon as reasonably practical. I don't find, I don't like that. We need to have concise timelines for this development. You'd kind of address the secondary access area. I mean, I wonder if we shouldn't table that then because why would we agree to 50/50 if you're able to work something out with the Corps? I think you have to have, you have to have a secondary access and I don't think it should necessarily be paid for by the city.
Highly likely that's going to be the situation. The Corps approval is imminent. But the agreement we had worked out several weeks ago, if for some reason I had to bear the expense of a pretty significant street without being able to put houses on it, but yet the city would realize the taxes from my development for infinity, okay? That was the agreement and the thought process between what we agreed to.
Yeah. I don't buy those lines anymore. I think it's important for all, several reasons to have that. We don't, if we don't have that secondary access, you're going to be sending the people that would develop in your area running down the streets of the neighborhoods that were up here that weren't happy about the development in the first place. And we have to have that. And it's in this agreement now. And if I approve this tonight, then I'm saying that that basically the burden comes to the cities and that in addition to share the cost, 50/50 has not been our standard practice. So also to, you don't have a completion date. I believe we had a completion date in the past. And again, back to the clubhouse that you addressed. The clubhouse in the original agreement should be finished on 12/31/23, which is a couple of years from now. Do you feel you can't make that date?
Actually, we do feel we can make that date.
So then that should stay in there?
No, we're not, we weren't suggesting that we wanted the clubhouse to go away. But what we were suggesting, if we're not able to get these extra 89 lots, we wouldn't be able to pursue the clubhouse.
Well, in the original agreement, it does say 12/31/23 and it would appear that you're pushing that date out beyond 12/31/23.
What, pardon me for asking, I should have this in front of me. But what date is it saying that we will have the clubhouse done by?
I believe, well, Sam could answer that. I believe it's 12/31/23.
I think the attorney modified it to before the final street was to be put in. So honor before the final street, which would have been the five years.
I'm willing to agree to the date that, 12/31/23.
Does that work? Okay. Mayor, you writing that down?
I just wrote it down.
Thank you. And then obviously, more people are bent out of shape about the pond thing. I'm not. I'm not. I think that's why people move to these things. They like, they like water and even if it's a pond, fine. And I don't have a problem, this is my opinion, with people if they want to put docks out there. But then we don't want situations where all of a sudden the docks turn into these junky things that, I mean, I think we'd have to inspect them or something with it. You know what I'm saying? Because they freeze over and maybe they have to have a type that's portable that pulls in or something like that, but.
Well, it would be my preference, okay? At least for the residents that, you know, I'm going to create homes for, is that we probably have a shared dock that, you know, everyone can use rather than have, rather than have eight individual docks. But like you said, the more sensitive thing to deal with is because initially the HOA is going to own the pond, okay? And we're going to be having to have discussions with Randy's constituents telling them to take their docks out of the pond. I just assume I'd have to have that conversation.
Okay. And, you know, as far as the fountains and things, I don't know why the city has, gets bent out of shape on that or something. I like that. In fact, if the water starts to, you know, get green and that, it aerates it and it kind of keeps it a little cleaner. But I don't know what, do we have regulations in place for ponds and stuff?
The reason with the fountains is that you reduce your stormwater credits when they have fountains in them.
I see.
So that's.
Did you hear what the mayor said?
I don't hear what.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought.
It reduces the stormwater credit when you have a fountain in it? Is the reason why they want to make sure? I'm not sure where you guys are located, Laura. You must be there. If you want to explain that a little bit further?
Thank you. Yes, so just a couple of things if I could. I do have a relatively extensive stormwater background and I've reviewed a lot of model, plan models. The, it's a zone of influence thing. So whatever the zone is of the fountain, that actually, that area has to be accounted for in your modeling and it is actually a water treatment reduction. So we actually, about a year ago, have a TMDL that was implemented for Lake Winnebago. So we have to optimize how much treatment we get in those areas on the east side of the city. So reducing that doesn't help us with our citywide modeling as well, especially if at some point in time we do take these over. So that's, it can be, they can be added, but just it's going to reduce your treatment. So, you know, we would just need to see the modeling updated for that.
Can I ask you why we would want to take them over? Especially after they've been being used for several years and then all of a sudden they become the new toxic sites that have to be cleaned? I've been saying this for, what, James, 30 years or so?
Right, and we've, we've waffled ourselves on that, especially with docks being there. It sets a precedence. This is a stormwater treatment pond. This is not a recreational pond. And I think that that's one thing that, just to keep in mind as we move forward with this, with the docks in particular, if we were to be taking this over, we would want to see permitting from our perspective for these docks. If they have to be removed for dredging, maintenance, that sort of a thing, that we're covered to be able to have those removed. One reason we would want to take these over for treatment is to meet that citywide TMDL that we do have to work towards with the DNR.
What, what's the big deal if there's a fountain? What changes the pond's importance? Whether the water goes shooting up in the air or not? What's the big deal?
It stirs the, it stirs the water up. So the way water, to get water quality in a wet pond, that water flows in from a rain event off of the impervious surfaces, it has to be able to settle in that water to the bottom and that's, that's why we have to dredge, that those sediments all go to the bottom. Stirring that water up reduces that settling that can occur.
What if they own the pond? Would they have to dredge it? Would they have to?
Yes.
Maintain it? I mean, those are issues you guys have to think about. So I don't, personally, if I were to buy a lot out there, I would like to be able to have a dock. I would like to see a fountain. And, but let's see, do I?
Can I add just one thing with that? And so staff has been fairly vocal about that aspect since this development agreement has come forward. And one of the things I guess we're stating is not, at least myself maybe, less behind me, but is not that we would forcefully say, no, not at all. But the language currently as written states, shall be placed into the stormwater management plan. There's nothing currently in the stormwater management plan and that's not the appropriate document to place something like that. So what we were having discussions with is written consent. So a mutual agreement, okay, this size of fountain, you pay for utilities, maintenance. That's what staff was looking for.
Do you have a, what number is that? Four point something? What is it? 7.2, okay. It says Atkins agrees that the ponds are designed as regional stormwater detention facilities and shall not be used inconsistent with the stormwater management plan. Docks and fountains shall be permitted so long as they are not prohibited by the stormwater management plan. So that kind of rules that out. Right. The cost of maintenance of the repair of any fountain shall be the responsibility of HOA and there shall be no use of motorized, not motorized, because Alderman Lang didn't ask me, but I think someone could take a kayak or a rowboat or something out there? Is that, would that would be allowable? Or other similar apparatus, which is vague again, and no treatment of the shoreline beyond the original approved within the stormwater management plan. So hopefully you guys caught that because there's, that sounds.
I've done one review.
Very wordy.
We've gotten one utterance, draft, I guess you could say, one draft so far of the stormwater management plan. It is not written in there at all. We do have a lot of revisions we do need to be making as we work through the site plan review process. So take that for what it is.
But yeah, see, you guys ask us to approve these things and then you tell us, well, we're going to, we have these things and then it changes. And then, and then I say, whoa, I even read it on the council floor and that's not what was in there.
The other thing about this is, is the docks and fountains and things of that nature, it's, it's not necessarily, again, that we're potentially against all of that. We do have some ponds that have fountains in them and things of that nature. It comes down to who's going to maintain it. What is the expectation then of us with that? If, if you turn this into a pond, it's, it's a stormwater detention pond. Okay, don't, don't try to confuse that with an aesthetic pond that you dug in your back 40 and you go swimming and things of that nature. That, that's not what this is, okay? So there, you're going to set an expectation of what this pond is supposed to be. So by allowing all of this, now everyone around this pond is going to have an expectation. And we, we, and all of us have not had that conversation to that extent yet to go the direction that you would like. And I don't think this, what's that?
About fishing?
Am I going to go out there and stop the young kids that are out fishing on some of these ponds? No, I don't. But again, if you, if you're going to take your dog out there and you're going to throw your, throw the ball in this pond for your dog and then you come back to us and say, my dog got sick because they were in this pond, you know, this, this pond is, it's meant to take the pollutants out of the water. You know, there's advisories on Lake Winnebago for blue green, algae and things of that nature. This pond is taking those nutrients out of the stormwater that would eventually end up into Lake Winnebago.
That's why I call them future toxic sites, that we'll all be spending millions of dollars of cleaning. And I think, I just, you've heard me say this before, but I disagree with the DNR on, on the stormwater retention stuff. I see it's good in some areas, but I just see it, all they're doing is pushing stuff somewhere else so that the people with the bucks, meaning those in government and that, are going to have to clean it up. But sorry for wasting your time here. So, so how about these, the wording in here as the areas as, as soon as reasonably applicable? That's usually not something that's typical in a development agreement.
Do you have an agreeable date, Mr. Atkins? I mean, we've talked with your attorney about that.
Alderman Sevenek, did I say that correctly?
Seven Nick, but that's fine.
I agree with your opinions, okay? But I also understand and respect where the city's coming. But I also understand and respect where the city's coming from is the how to administer this. In my scheme of things, okay, I'm not that emotional about it. Okay? I would like to have a fountain. I would like to have a dock. Do I have to? No. It's much more important to me to be able to move forward with this development.
Right, obviously.
Okay? And I agree with staff that, you know, this is, should be sat down, talked about and come to some kind of, you know, common consensus as to how this would be administered.
Actually, what he was asking about was the date, I think it's to acquire the property and there's a couple other ones in there that just say as soon as practical. I mean, is there a date that we could insert in there? The end of this year? I don't know what date might work for you.
On what issue specifically?
I think it's.
Sam, do you have a section on that?
It's all right and gain the necessary approval. That one I think is done. The, the final plat, do you have? And is there the purchase of the property too? Yeah, and purchase of the property.
The purchase of the property is in the next 30 days. This agreement is.
So can we insert a date in there that you would be happy with three or four months out from now?
I said labor date. August 31st.
I'm good with that.
And I think your question on the second access, Dan, the way it's written.
Yeah, it's really.
Is if.
Well, you sort of had an answer.
Well, if the Army Corps does not give approval for the street that you're planning on putting in there, then we would look at how many lots you could get in there with the street. And we would look at splitting whatever cost for the areas that don't have lots of budding it.
I think the wording is appropriate right now, especially if it's 99% sure that it's a non-issue.
Yeah. So that's, that wording only happens if.
Right, but there's no, there's one percent there that, you might say 99. I'm not sure if it's 99.
And you think the value of this is 50, did you say 40 or 50 million? Actually, if we can have you stand by the microphone.
Yeah, you have to go to the mic because this is televised.
Otherwise, you look like a mime when you're on TV and no one can tell what you're saying.
Okay. It's been a long time since we presented here. We originally thought there would be plus or minus 100 lots. After everything, all the hoops were jumped through and everything, I, it appears as well, we're going to end up with 89 lots. Okay? But the, the big significant change, our average sale so far has been 600,000. So just round off for simple, for simple numbers, that's $54 million evaluation. And, you know, I don't want, I don't think we want to split hairs.
No.
You know, on moving forward with what's going to create a tremendous amount of valuation for the city. And we're not receiving $1 of TIF money.
Right. So that's why I was okay with putting this in there because we're not giving them a TIF.
It's too open-ended. And I have to mention that Alderman Nichols called me with the same concerns I had. So she shared exactly where I was with these. So I'm just trying to button it up, clean it up, and I think we can move forward. I don't, do we need to offer those as amendments?
We can do the amendments.
Mayor or Alderman Sevigny?
Yeah.
May I, may I just add? I was addressing both. It, it sounds like so.
The thing is, I can turn your mic off.
Looking at the language, the parties acknowledge with respects to the need for the modification as a result of the decision of the Army Corps, if Kelly Lake is determined as a secondary access, each party can expect a share of 50-50 financial responsibility. Are, are you guys trying to get out of that? And I, I apologize, I was not involved in that discussion. If no homes can be constructed on Kelly Lake, then it's 50-50?
Yes.
Does that minor amendment make sense then to that point to, to state? If Kelly Lake is a secondary access with no development abutting, then at that point it's 50-50? Because I, I think that's what both of the parties, being the mayor and Mr. Atkins are stating there. I, I just, yeah, I would agree with Alderman Sevigny that I don't think it's worded in that fashion.
And that's what you were looking for, Mr. Atkins, correct? Only if there were no houses built there would we.
I remembered to go back here this time.
Perfect.
Let me think this out for a second. With the Corps of Engineers, it was kind of an all or nothing proposition. Okay? We went from a very liberal interpretation of wetland to a very restrictive and to the point where a month ago, it was going to cost me almost $700,000 in wetland remediation, which would have killed the project. Okay? That's how extreme it got at one point. But it looks like, you know, level heads ultimately prevailed. And luckily McMahon found this letter from several years ago indicating that the, the Corps of Engineers waived jurisdiction. So that was what saved us actually. So the Corps of Engineers said they're going to make good on their letter. They just haven't done it in writing yet. They prom, as of last Thursday, they promised us something in writing within a month. And then the whole Kelly Lake Drive issue becomes a non-issue. And I, I may not be exactly correct, but I believe as far as lots, it would be actually part of the new Kelly Lake Drive. There's eight lots and it's not as many as I would have hoped for. Okay? But it's good enough.
So do, do we just want to insert that if there's no, no development abutting Kelly Lake Road? I should talk closer to the microphone, apparently. There we go. So Alderman Sevigny is suggesting, I think actually Director Schrader is suggesting that we insert, if there's no development abutting Kelly Lake Road, then we would split those costs.
That is correct.
Okay. So we could amend the language in there to state that.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we need to make a motion first and then add the amendments. So I'll.
Dan, do you agree with what we're, we're saying?
Just want to see if there's, there's no recommended motion, is there?
No, but it was just.
So we'll, at this time then, Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion that we go along with the development agreement, but by and between the City of Manassas and Atkins Development Group LLC, the Lakeland Lake cottages are.
Okay. So is there a second and then you're going to make some amendments, correct?
Make the amendment.
So there's a motion, a second by which, Groudi? Ted? Okay. And then.
The First Amendment would deal with if there is no development with, on the Kelly properties that we split 50-50, something to that effect.
So we would insert with no development abutting Kelly Lake Road? We would do that?
You have that?
Do you want to put them all together?
Yes.
Okay, so.
She's got it.
Okay, so here's, here's the three, four amendments that I'm seeing.
Can you pull up the latest map?
That the, the three areas where it states as soon as reasonably practical.
Yep.
We put a date of August 31st of 2022 in there.
I'm agreeable to that.
And the second is right below that in 1.2 that talks about if, if no development is abutting Kelly Lake Road, each party can expect to share that financial responsibility.
Mayor?
Yes?
And just for clarification, so that's Kelly Lake Road south of the pond.
Sure.
So.
That is correct.
You have that, Haley?
Yes.
The clubhouse be completed by 12:31 of 23?
Is that still agreeable? The clubhouse?
Yes.
Okay. And that we would have written consent for docks and fountains with the city.
Okay, can you, Haley, you're typing all this? You want to put that up then when you have time?
Sure.
Thank you. And I would, I would add, you know, with the docks and fountains, again, that they would not be unreasonably withheld or something to that nature. I think that's basically what the, the Atkins group is looking at.
Is there a second on the amendments? Sure.
This lot here would stay regardless.
Okay.
Okay, but there's seven lots, 201 through 207.
Okay.
Those are the ones that are in question.
Okay.
This lot would stay regardless because we have access over here.
Sure.
But these 201 through 207 is what's in question.
Show those guys. Yeah, I think I recall that.
Yeah.
201 stays regardless. Okay? 202 or 208. Okay. 201 to 207 are ones questioned. 208 will stay regardless. 208 start to stay regardless. 201 through 207.
But they talked about that, but they can't. Sure.
Randy, I don't know if you remember, the residents, you know, actually came around to our point of view at the meeting, but they asked that we reduce the number of lots. And that did happen and it's got the fault.
So we have a.
So Haley, you're.
A motion to amend.
Okay, so let her finish, Mayor, and then she can post it up there. Yeah, we have the motions, I suppose, if they want to discuss.
But I need a second on the amendments first. Is there anyone who wishes to second the amendments?
I was hoping to reread them up on.
Okay. There they go.
Okay.
Not completed. As soon as reasonably practical should be replaced by August 31st. The cost will be split 50-50 to other. Oh.
That's not right. The project will not be completed by.
So the, where it says as reasonably practical.
Darn it, I thought we could sneak that in there.
That'd be quite a trick. I don't know, tonight there's a show, 100 Days or something where they build a house on HGTV.
It used to be, even as recently as five years ago, you could even get a moderately sized home built in three to four months. It's impossible now.
Sure.
Now, supply chain and labor being what it is, now you're looking at six to eight months. I used to be able to count on as soon as one subcontractor walked out, the others walking in. Not anymore.
Well, where, where are they? They're just not coming in or what? Those subcontractors, that's why don't they, one leaves, the other one comes in, but it's in between.
Nothing. The problem is, is there's just not enough labor out there. Not even close. And it's not just us, it's every industry right now.
Yeah, so, okay.
I mean, demographically, they've been predicting this for years because there's so many people that are going to the tipping point of retiring.
The baby boomers.
That's what it is. Got her, Mayor?
I think we got this much closer. We'll see if it looks right. Okay. So the amendments were as reasonably practical replaced by 8/31/22. So that's the areas of purchasing the property and those sorts of things. And if no development abutting the road, then we would split the cost of the road. Clubhouse completed by 2033 and written consent for docks and fountains. Does that look better? Does that look better to you?
It's 23, Mayor, not 33.
Was it?
It's 23. There you go. Boy, he still doesn't want that clubhouse built.
I missed that, sorry. Does that look?
I was just teasing the mayor.
The, the sign is up, right? I subscribe to your Facebook page, so I've been seeing your little posts.
So was there a second?
There was not yet. Is there a second? Okay, so there's a motion and a second by Tom Groudi for the amendments. Do we have discussion on the amendments? Did you guys want to discuss the amendments, Randy?
No, I just wanted to know about that one wrong story.
Hold on. Go ahead.
My road, Mr., yeah, my, Mr. Atkins, that road that comes off of Kernan Avenue is Kelly Lake Drive, okay? And then that road that actually, I think you guys use it for your, for your trucks and things, that access road. Is that going to be a permanent road for?
No, no.
That will not be a permanent road?
The, there, there's actually verbiage that the DOT indicated when it quits being a farm road.
Okay.
Were required to remove it.
Okay, so the second access or escape road, I'll use that. The two roads are Gosling Way, which is to the north side of that big pond, or to the south side, Kelly Lake Drive, and they both go on to Kernan Avenue. Is that the two ways?
You're still going to come in through Kernan, but you can spread out to the subdivision from two different tipping points.
Correct, yes. And that, that, that'll be, that, that's good. I want to.
And then, of course, they can come in from the north on Kernan.
They could, yes. Gotcha. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Ted?
Well, Pam's not here, but James is. With, with all, I don't know how up to speed you are with this whole process, but I'm glad Alderman Sevigny got dates putting in instead of some of the verbiage. So I'm just looking for your, I don't know if it's blessing or you're comfortable with how this is written up here? Am I on?
Now you're on.
I'm not sure I'm in a position to, to give an opinion about this because this is first I've seen it is right here. I understand, yeah. And I have not been part of the process. But what, what I understand, the amendments are intended to be is, is to give direction to staff, to, to change aspects of our existing agreement with this specific language in there. And if, as long as the council has the understanding of what that is, it would be, it would be acceptable. Okay, thanks, James.
I can't get answers like that all the time.
We'll make sure we hire you in June, okay? So right now, what's on the floor is just the amendments. Are there any more, is there any more discussion on the amendments? So seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote on just the amendments?
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, and then.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, we got one more vote. Now it has to be as amended. So is there any other discussion on the agreement in general? No? Okay, so this is as amended then, what we just changed. Perfect. She just added as amended.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, now you're good to go. We will.
Thank you.
We will make these modifications and then we'll get it set ready for signature for you in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we have ordinances and resolutions. R2, do we have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to, except to make the resolution for R-2-22. It's a resolution authorizing the application for road project grant funding from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation introduced by myself, Alderman Langdon.
So there's, there's a motion, a second by Alderman Taylor? Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 7-0.
Hopefully the first of our successful grants, right? Item two is Resolution 5. Do you, is there a motion, or...
Doesn't matter. All right. I'll make the motion to approve R-522, a resolution to approve the cancellation of outstanding checks and the write-off of the general uncollectible accounts receivable and delinquent personal property tax receivables, introduced by Mayor Marcus.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's a motion, a second, discussion. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. A member from the public had mentioned the boatwheeler property, and I think it's $20,000. Could someone highlight that for us?
Did you want me to do that, John, or do you want to?
Can we chat?
Apparently he would like you to. I'll fill in if you need more.
Okay, so this was, we had invoiced this property owner, I believe back in 2015, to connect to the sanitary system, and then this one is, it's my understanding, no longer collectible. And the expense was, I mean, it was paid out of the debt service fund, therefore it has to be written off to the, the debt service fund as well.
So around 2,000, we put in the backbone system for sewer and water out to the Lake Park Villas area, and as properties annexed, as properties wanted to connect, the agreement was they had to annex into the city. This property refused to annex and waverly allowed them to connect. So we did bill them for their area-wide special assessment, but because they are not within the City of Manassas, they never annexed, we do not have statutory authority to place it on their property tax bills, and Harrison also will not place it on the property tax bill. So this property, as well as, I don't know, probably 50 or 60 more acres, we will never collect that area-wide special assessment because of the incorporation of Harrison.
Okay, thank you.
I say we take it off and we continue to, to bill him, and keep collecting interest.
I agree.
What was that?
I think we should not put it on here, and that we should continue to bill him and add interest.
Well, it would have, it's passed its collection period, so from an audit point of view, we, we have to write it off at this point.
And we did bill him, I don't know how many times, and he just refused to pay it.
Right, since 2012.
Because we don't have statutory authority.
And then we enter into agreements to allow for him to rent our property?
I was not in favor of that agreement, and that agreement will be terminated this year with the grant, so...
Well, really unfortunate, too, because it really went against our boundary agreement, too, and everything else, and it's, it's, it's dirty. It's dirty.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote? Uh-oh. You wanna, can you clear it and hit it again? So we're gonna vote on that again, hopefully ends...
Yeah, no, I can.
Okay. So this, this is also R5. Yeah.
We had another question, but it's too late.
What was the question, James?
Just had a question for Jen. Why couldn't we collect from Anytime Fitness? Certainly, they're still in business throughout the Fox Cities.
Must have a franchise.
Yeah, we'd be collecting from that specific location for that personal property, but keep in mind that all of them, except for one of the accounts, we are just writing off the city portion. On an annual basis, we are able to charge back the other taxing entities for their portion of these that have either gone out of business, bankrupt, or, you know, a couple of criteria, and then when it gets to be that seven-year mark, then we would write off the city portion if there are any of those accounts.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item 3 is Resolution 6. Do we have a motion? Sure, item 3 is Resolution 6. It's a resolution to apply and spend WEDC idle sites grant. Alderman Sevenick?
Move for R622.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's a motion, a second by Tom Groudi. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 7-0.
Item L is appointments. There is one for the Landmarks Commission. Alderman Groudi?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like the council to accept the applicant, or the mayor's appointment of Sarah Bauer, but I don't have the dates on here.
It's on the next row.
Oh, 3/21/22 through 3/1/24.
Is there a second?
Second.
I was too busy looking at my laptop.
It's a motion, a second. Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, there was a question from the public. Is there a list that, an existing list, and then you take off the top of that list, or how does it go?
There is, there is not a specific list. I don't...
Mayor, I can't before you...
There is not a specific list. I do not have any applicants right now for the Landmarks Commission other than this person, and this person is actually the spouse of a former Landmarks Commissioner who has asked to not be reappointed, and his spouse is going to be re, be appointed for that space instead, so...
So spouses trump.
There is no one else that has asked.
Yeah.
But just...
She's qualified.
Someone called me and said, "Do you, do you approve of two spouses being on the same commission?" And I said, "Well, the other one is leaving the commission." So otherwise, no, I would not appoint a husband and a wife to the same...
That was tongue-in-cheek, Mayor.
Or two brothers.
Thank you.
I didn't have that opportunity. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item N is public comment. Got two people left? No? Is there a motion to adjourn?
We should adjourn, second.
We are adjourned, thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox Cities campus assists the City of Manassas with video recordings of city meetings. Manassas residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www.cityofmanassas-wy.gov. To express opinions about City of Manassas issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman, contact information appears on the website, or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.